Hi everyone, we are here with the candidate series Chamber Chatter Live with Sumner City Council Candidate Sharla Newman. Welcome Sharla!
Thank you! I love that you're doing this!
Well, we are super excited to have you today. I know there's a lot of people who know you in the community, your commitment to the chamber and now in the political world. There's a lot of facets to you and we are excited to uncover all of them. I'm Tara Doyle Anakin, the CEO of the Puyallup Sumner Chamber.
I'm Ivy Anakin, I'm the Director of Membership Engagement here at the Puyallup Sumner Chamber.
And I'm Sharla Newman, many things, but most relevant, also a candidate for City of Sumner City Council.
Fabulous! So well hey, let's just dive right in and get to the bottom of why you decided to throw your hat in the ring here.
That's a great question. You know, I view, it's funny because I never imagined myself wanting to be behind that side of the dais at public meetings. But it's always been, I think, considered in our family, my family in particular, a form of public service. And I always try to help support candidates who I think would make government better, just through, like, just making, through providing more, creating a better process, creating more faith in the process and transparency and whatnot. And I kept thinking about, okay, who's this year? Who's this year? And I was, no offense, like, I think there's a lot of good people and I've met some of them. I thought, oh, I wish I'd known you sooner because it should be you. But I just thought it's my turn, it's my turn to give back and try and contribute, like, in ways that were my skill, where I have a specific skillset that helps benefit, I hope, the community.
Hey, I saw Kyle Hartkey's watching. Hey Kyle!
Hi Kyle!
Don't ask questions, I'm so afraid, I'm so afraid.
Well, let's see if Kyle's sons have any questions for you. I know you're kind of a favorite auntie in that community to a lot of people. So you're a good kids lover. I love a lot of your pictures out there.
They're gonna ask me to say words they're not allowed to say.
You're that kind of favorite auntie. I love it. So yeah, you also have some ties in advocacy that you've done for the chamber. How long have you been involved with our chamber?
Oh, that's a great question. I have no idea. Years, I mean years. So I've been, I've been like, I think, a quiet board member for a number of years. And one of the reasons, and I will say when I first sort of, when I really knew that I was gonna submit myself in the area, I had, I was on the cusp, like, I won't name the other chambers, but I tried other chambers, like, does them out, but including this one. And the reason why I became invested in this one is because this was the one that seemed so interesting advocacy. And actually, doing something, like, the coffees are great, but I didn't need the retail networking. And in order to change, like, the lives of businesses, it's the behind-the-scenes advocacy. And this chamber has been really great about understanding that and is really one of the few voices, like Tacoma, Tacoma Pierce does a great job, but these other chambers outside of Tacoma really also need to be represented. And this group is so great. You guys go down to Olympia, you do the face-to-face, both on city councils and with legislators and members of Congress. So you guys were actually providing true value. And this one, I made home.
Terrific. So tell us a little bit about your day job because a lot of that advocacy is really what you do.
Kyle loves this question. Kyle always says, you know-
Or you're a captain of a ship.
Kyle always likes to tell me, he goes, "You know that no one knows what you do, right?"
The cat is out of the bag now.
I always assume it will bore people. I don't know where to start. But what I, I am a government affairs consultant and I feel like in order to, and a lot of people, honestly, I mean, you could say lobbyist in some ways, but it's usually with far, it's not as simple as going down to Olympia and just asking for a line item in the budget. It's usually for far more complex policy issues, where there is an entire round of public education that needs to be involved. And also protecting clients, and clients come in all forms, like both, like, private sector, like businesses, but I've also done work for nonprofits and for governments, including, for instance, in Pierce County, helping set up the flood control zone district. And so it's like, so it's also protecting, like, helping get people through the process because most, I do, I've been involved in government for a long time, but I've never kidded myself into believing that, and never even expecting that other people should be as familiar with government as I need to be. You know, and I think, and that's where people have a disadvantage and you always want to help equalize the playing field in government, I think, anyone who's going in there. Like, it can be daunting sometimes.
Right. What are some of the more issues, I guess, closer to your campaign that you would like people to know about you? What are those important advocacy pieces?
So, I love Sumner. I mean, I-
We love Sumner too!
I picked Sumner. You know, like, some people are here and I value that, like, one of these I love, like, and I know so many of my friends are the fourth generation of people who grew up in Sumner. And, and some people might see it as a, I don't even want to consider, I don't even consider it in terms of advantage or disadvantage. It doesn't even matter. The point is, it's kind of like having an adopted kid, like, hey, you should, like, know that I picked you, rather than like, just being the place. Oh, sorry, sorry, I was already warned.
Patty, Julie Dorr, Patty Summers, Patty Tanya, everyone's tuned in, just want to quickly say hi. Thanks for watching today. Councilwoman Dorr, thank you. She said, "Go Sharla!"
Julie's fantastic. Even when we disagree, we have so much fun. Anyway, so I love Sumner and the funny part is, is that it was the perfect balance. Well, first of all, it was the community assets, like, really, and the community, like, invited me in. You know, I had all kinds of experience before I ended up deciding that that was permanently where I was going to be. And so they were extremely welcoming and it's just the perfect mix of, of like, of urban conveniences and small-town charm, but even that makes it sound corny. It's more than, it's community investment. Like, the charm can be a facade, you know, but it is actually, like, truly, like, community investment. And the more you get to know it, like, it's just impossible to not love. And even with friends in Seattle, like, I brag about it all the time. Then they ask me to show them where it is on a map, but, but it's because I talk about it. I love, I love Sumner. So many reasons. For example, oh, you guys, go to Rhubarb Days tomorrow.
Oh, yes.
Which they, they have, yes, no, and they have, in the evening, they have their, I don't, it's three Bs, I don't remember the order. Beer, brats, and bingo, or bingo, brats, and beer, I don't know, but somewhere in there.
The three Bs event.
My friends, we've already, I think they actually supply everything that you need for bingo, but just in case, we even bought our own Daubers already.
Oh boy, this is prepared.
Feel so old. Amazon, there are reviews, by the way, of bingo Daubers. And we went with the one recommended from the woman playing bingo since 1972.
Good job. Hey, if you use that kind of homework when you're approaching a problem, that's probably pretty good.
It was an accident. We went down a rabbit hole. It was kind of funny.
Oh, so how long have you actually been in Sumner?
I'm always horrible with years. I don't recall it either because I think I started doing, like, really truly becoming invested in helping out with Sumner, including like the Y, since, it's probably been about seven years, so I think somewhere between 2012 or 13, like, one of those. And then, and then was spending almost every day there, but not technically, but it was right outside of limits, of city limits, until my place opened up. So for those of you, if you don't know, I live above Trampside Pizza.
Greatest place in the world. Don't they tell you not to tell the internet where you live? This is the worldwide web you're talking to here.
There are multiple barriers.
We have multiple viewers.
Good luck getting through, though. Like, I can't get packages delivered there, like, so, like, I feel pretty safe. But anyway, so I think about a year and a half to a year before that was opening, like, while that was being built. And I feel a little bit bad because, like, kind of like through work, I found out that that development was going in. And, I mean, I stalked the owners. I truly did.
Everyone knows what she wants.
I let everyone know, like, when you talk to them, let them know, like, I want it and I want the front, I want the front place. And then I ran into them, this is what's so great about Sumner, it's a small world. I ran into them at a restaurant and I interrupted their dinner. I was like, I want a lease right now. And that was well more than a year before I moved in. And anyway, so ever since, like, so living at that current place anyway, ever since that, whenever that went in, we didn't need to ask for a back.
Wonderful. You're really, like, you talk about community investment, right, and how that's really important to you. If elected, what kind of changes would you want to make or what kind of would you want to strengthen there, deepen there? What are you really looking to accomplish as a city council member?
So some of it is really boring in that, I mean, my number-one goal, and it's not one that you usually talk about with people because it's a total snooze fest, but stewardship, like, good stewardship. And, and I feel like I carry an advantage because of my experience with, caught every week, having to work within so many different jurisdictions, you get to see the best and the worst. So you, like, you get to learn from people's mistakes and you also get really good ideas from people who are trying something new that might take us longer to see. And so just that kind of exposure, so that you have people there asking questions, like, curiosity will do amazing things. Like, if you're just curious enough, it helps lead, it leads to better ideas. Anyway, so good stewardship is one of, is really foundational for me. The other things, this is weird, most people run, I shouldn't say most, a lot of people tend to run for office after they, after they run into something that angers them or they're frustrated by, and that's, that's the catalyst for getting involved. I am not running out of anger, which, and I can get angry and frustrated with things, but I am not running out of anger. And that's, I am running truly out of optimism. There are so many regional decisions and things at play. And I have been frustrated watching the last decade of decisions coming from, like, we have great council members there, but we haven't always. And, and there's only so much that a single person can do. And so you need people who want to all, I hope that they disagree with one another. That leads to healthier government, but all still have similar goals. And I feel like the problem of, it's getting better the last couple of years, but before that, their problem was there were no, it was just NIMBY. Just not in my backyard, all things, all things. That's a very unrealistic approach to policy because growth is going to happen. You know, there's no force field that keeps people outside of Sumner. And, and we're paying the price of people not wanting to deal with it. Like, traffic is terrible. It's terrible. And I applaud the city for buckling down. Like, they did incredible job about getting funding for Traffic Avenue right away. And so things are improving, but you kind of constantly want that view ahead. It's really out of optimism instead of anger in terms of why I'm running.
I think that was pretty eloquently put. I really enjoyed the other day at our candidate forum. We got a little, I guess, peek at what your background looked like, your parents, your family. I think people are always interested in, you know, what are your roots and how were you brought up?
It's kind of, I know I always am. I mean, sometimes it's a weird way, but I always, oh, including with work. I always want to know, like, want to know how they grew up, like, where they grew up. First of all, I don't think we can escape it. Like, it just, you know, you can-
That's not what you're running from?
That's not what you were running from?
My parents, they sometimes wonder, but no, I am not. I am not. No, but I do think that my, like, my upbringing, like, helped shape me. It's a very frequent joke in our family that we had to have been the product of a science experiment. Like, one thing that did not come up, like, in 60 seconds, I think I got through to my parents, which, you know, and my dad, he was, he's a truck driver and he was an orphan by age of six, and which has made him so grateful for everything. Like, his childhood's crummy after that, but so his adult, it makes him just incredibly proud. Like, my sibling, I do have, I have a younger sister and a younger brother. And we benefited from him having constant pride in us because it was all better than he had hoped for while growing up. Like, it exceeded, you know, yeah, he just, he always says, he's like, "I'll be fine if I die today." Like, it's just life has already been better. And then my mom, who is very German and then brings us all back down to reality and makes us study for spelling bees, at least when we were growing up. But, but I have to credit my mom, she works for, like, Northwest Ireland, but her whole family, I would do think it's actually tied to genetics. Just, you have to be involved, like, it just, and a lot of them choose to do it through politics, but it could be through anything. I wrote my first letter to the editor when I was in fourth grade. And, and the paper printed it too. It was in defense of a teacher, but- Anyway, but like, so you always are supposed to stand up. But, but then the science experiment part, my siblings, so my brother is on his way to becoming a Catholic priest. My sister is an amazing mom, who is actually, practices, she's in the LDS community, and an accountant by training, by training. Sometimes she's working, sometimes she's not, a lot of times with the schools. And then I went into politics.
Yeah.
So, science experiments, we have everything.
You guys really run the gamut on everything there, huh?
We have you all covered, which makes us a very accepting family. I mean, like, that truly, that, that part is really cool. Like, we do all get along really well and have fun with each other.
That was a pretty telling question we asked you, but I think the most telling question, if you could share with the audience, is what's your favorite Disney movie?
I feel like I need to, so, I have two. And, I mean, I feel like everyone's going to have to Google them afterward because, I'm trying to think if either, oh, one was in color. Okay, so the first one, like, the first one was That Darn Cat.
Oh, yeah!
I love that one.
The original, thank you!
When I, so, for those who don't know, I grew up in the Northwest, but I also left, like, I kind of needed to broaden my horizons. And so I do have experience working in federal government, like, in Congress on both the House and the Senate side. And while I was there, I did adopt a black cat and it was like, we say, anyway, I did call it, like, That Darn Cat? No, actually, because we had to, like, make it more modern. We're no longer living in a black cat world, sorry. Yeah. Anyway, and so it was DC for short, and of course, and I knew this, everyone's gonna think I named it after the city, but I actually named it after the movie.
I love it. You're a clever one.
That cat went everywhere. It was, that's a whole other story. It was a freak of nature. It was not a regular cat.
Okay, now you, you lured us in.
The second one, the second one is, I'm guessing that most people don't realize this, but Disney made a horror movie. Like, I shouldn't say a horror movie, but like, a, but, well, actually was, anyway.
Patty Summers says she loves that movie.
But they made a scary movie called The Watcher in the Woods. And growing up, it was, like, slumber party stuff, it was our favorite movie to watch when you wanted to be freaked out. I mean, it was, it's kind of, it didn't show anything horrific, but just always, the views from the woods, like, truly, The Watcher from the Woods. It, it's still, it's, like, actually, there are a couple of us, we grew up watching that and we still refer to it, like, it, but I don't think most people have, I never run into, I never, I don't know anyone else, other than my small circle friends who've seen it.
So no grander visions of being a princess and just-
No, no.
The other Disney girl, let some people go, sometimes.
I sometimes wonder if that was genetic too. Like, nope, no interest. Like, give me the cat, like, the shaggy dog, you know, it's like, never cared, like, the princess, I just bored me. Honestly, the princess ones just bored me.
He's kidding. Did you like-
I'm not kidding.
How about Herbie?
Herbie was great. Herbie's good.
That's funny.
So you'll be at Rhubarb Festival this weekend, or Rhubarb Days, not festival?
Yes, everyone should go. I'm trying to think of the hours because you have Cindy, if you don't know her, Cindy from Chamber Staff, she's going to be a judge for the pie contest.
She is. She's very excited about it. She's been practicing her pie eating and tasting all week. I'm just kidding, she hasn't, but she is a connoisseur of pies.
Yep, you've got a good one there.
You can't tell by looking at her waist.
What are some of your other favorite Sumner festivals or activities?
Well, so, the two classics for me are the Daffodil Parade and the Santa Parade.
And both of which you can see from your, your phone, right?
Well, yes, and so this is, hopefully, there are gonna be a limited number of people who watch this because I will confess, and in fact, Kyle and Jelena Hartkey, basically, my first fall in the apartment, I had not paid attention to schedules. And I was going to almost like a reunion dinner, like, through people I used to work with in Everett. I was headed out the door and I just came to a slam because I ran right into people right at the front door, which never happens. And it's all of the generations of the Hartkeys and they're out standing in the rain and it was the Santa Parade, which I didn't realize was going on. It was raining, I felt so bad. I'm like, oh crud, here are my keys, you know, like, there's not much, like, there was, you know, there was like a little bit of furniture and some wine. All night long, they kept taking turns sending pictures of those holding the one house plant that someone had given me and sending them to me all through my dinner and so, and that created the tradition. It looks very different now, where, so it is always, ever since then, it's been open bar and food and viewing at my place for both the Santa and the Daffodil Parade.
Good to know.
The chief of police has sent people upstairs to go and get it, so, like, I don't have to know you in order for you to be there.
I like the hospitality.
I'm not gonna promise that there's room.
Do you know how many beans we're getting on these?
Yeah, I know, that's why I was a little bit worried. I was a little bit worried, but you know, like, the fire department will cut it off when it needs to be, so. But anyway, so those are the two really classic ones, but that's probably me as a newcomer. Like, some might say, I mean, the great part about Sumner is they always have downtown events. And so, like, they do, like, different, like, wine walks through, like, the, the Sumner Promotion Downtown, yes, Association, always get the, again, the acronym, the initials mixed up. But also, like, they do one for the reunions, so, like, homecoming, every single graduation year, like, gets a car in it. So, like, the people graduating 1975 still love going to that. So, like, there's so many things and it kind of depends on just what your flavor is. My favorite new one, though, the night market.
Yes, I heard that. It was hit out of the park.
It was. I got my earrings there.
Nice. Oh, you always have great earrings, great earrings and great necklace.
And that's kind of what I love about Sumner. It keeps, like, the charm and there's always the classics. But I really appreciate how they are open to new ideas. The Chair of the Arts Commission is a guy younger than me. I have to give him a shout-out. Michael Hoxter, I don't, he can watch later, but, I mean, he truly was the one who sort of, I think, moved forward with the idea of the night market. And it was packed, like, both nights, like, oh, I wish they had-
In jazz, I heard, right? It's more normal jazz nights?
Well, yes. I do love Summers, so we have music off of Main in, every Friday evening in July, and movies off Main in August.
Oh, nice.
It's, it's really kind of cool. It is. Like, you just, you know, so you don't have free events anymore. Like, it's so hard to find free events and all of these are free. And it's like, anyway, so Sumner really gives back, in the city. Anyway, they give back that way. I think it's great.
Got a few more people tuned in.
We have Giovanni Vendetti, Justin Camerata. Giovanni says, "Go Sharla, go!" Steph Hilfer had a sweet comment about three powerhouse women on screen. Thank you, Steph. She's awesome.
I'm glad you're watching. I haven't seen any of the questions.
So something we ask many of our guests is, we just got wrapped up with Leadership Institute and we looked at a number of different leadership styles and certainly want to hear a little bit about where you pull your strength from and what type of leader would you describe yourself to be?
Okay, first, again, I have to applaud Kent Hojum from the fair, who runs the Leadership Institute. I was so thankful at first, they were like shorthanded, I think, last year. It was like the best accident, like, that could have happened because then I got to go and help out and so sort of experience, like, see firsthand everything that goes on. And they build such, both, like, helping grow people, I think, but also then building this very tight bond between those who experience it. Anyway, so I have to applaud them for doing a great job. But in terms of leadership style, this is where background is helpful. I do, like, fairness is, is, just a sense of justice and fairness is so key to me. And I think that goes back to, like, my grandma, who would let priests know when they were doing wrong. But also when they didn't speak English, they were German, but then would always, anyone in need of a meal, who also didn't speak English or German, and they would build tight bonds, but it was like shared meals, like, just sort of this whole, hey, you're in it together kind of thing. And I struggle with what happens today with the enemy creation, like, we have to be this side or this side. My experience working in, like, policy and government is usually gray. It's, like, it's all nuanced and you just have to pick among priorities, but it's not binary choice. You can help shape and mold things and which, that doesn't happen as often when you're so busy just calling each other names. So I like to try to understand where people come from and figure out if there are ways to make things work that haven't been considered yet. But anyway, so I would say, but in terms of leadership style, like, it has to be the fairness and what gets you to fairness and justice. Because I say all the time, if you don't have faith in the process, you won't have faith in the outcome. But still, that's where, like, so it has to be transparent, it has to be open, and then you can be decisive. You know, it's like, because there's some people that sit there like, "I want collaboration," which is great, but sometimes that's code for, "We're not gonna make a decision until it's a unanimous," like, until every single person, we're like, and that's not realistic. Like, you have, like, it just, it isn't. And, like, I'm not knocking it, but, but it can't be, that can't be the only goal. Like, it does have to be collaborative, but you also get collaboration if you have more transparency and if you are more open and inviting during the process from the very beginning. I hope that all cities take it upon themselves to actually, for instance, extend their notification requirements beyond what the state currently requires. Just simple things like that. Mailers, this is what's going on, we invite you to, like, they have like a 500-foot limit right now. It's like a block, you know, it just, which, like, downtown Seattle, okay, that could be hundreds of homes in a condo. That's not realistic for the rest of us. That doesn't notify really many people where decisions may affect them and impact them. And I think, and it, some cities, I think, have pushed against doing that because they think, oh, it just complicates, like, then it's more work. But it's not more work. Honestly, like, the more time you have to communicate with people, actually, the easier the job is. What's hard is when people are taken by surprise. So, anyway, so, yeah, sorry, that was the long, long way, but leadership is like fairness, open, transparency and decisiveness.
So we're gonna wrap some things up here, but I'd like to you to, I guess, let your audience here know and particularly those in your district in Sumner know why they should vote for you. Aside from being super funny and super smart.
This sounds really trite. This sounds very trite, but just like the night market, which, like, the quote that came from, like, only after the Arts Commission, like, because the same people served for years and years, and they are amazing and I applaud, I'm so happy that they also, they weren't stuck to their ideas. Like, they knew and they were really open to welcoming, oh, someone offers a new one and they're open to that. And it's a great success, like, take from people's experience. You know, and, and they did that with a younger person on, anyway, so I think there's an analogy for what I hope I can do on council as well and sort of just update, like, basically get to even better, better decisions and outcomes through more innovative inclusion and outreach. And also an understanding, honestly, ask questions. Like, makes a huge difference. You just, you have to care about what's in front of you. I'll, I'll read the stuff and I'll ask about it, like, to make sure it works.
And you let the people know. Well, and I think you also just opened up your doors, so, I mean, gosh, while they're waiting for their pizza at Trampside Pizza, Sumner, it sounds like they can just come on up and ask you a question if they want to.
I have to admit, I feel like I'm disappointed that neither Giovanni nor Patty didn't have asked me any questions. Because I feel like they actually asked everyone a question.
Hey, audience, you got, I know she's highly entertaining and we're asking some good questions, but really, this is for you. So if you have specific questions you'd like of Sharla, hey, we'll hang out.
Although maybe I should thank them for not leaving.
Well, and you can always ask questions later and Sharla will check the comment section and be sure to respond to those.
True.
So if you don't get your questions in now, be sure to ask them later on. I know that- I know that she's, she's always an open door. She always answers her phone. She's, she's kind of always.
That's the beauty of Facebook, is that it keeps going. Depends on the question.
Well, everyone, hey, thanks on a gorgeous Friday afternoon. Thank you so much for tuning in here. I know a lot of you will be out at Rhubarb Days. Have a great time. We've got Chamber Chatter Live coming to you on Monday with Puyallup City Council candidate Kurt Jimastat, so we're really excited for that as well. Another great candidate, also a board member here too, so great collaborators, collaborators with the chamber. So thank you again, everyone, signing off. Have a good one. Bye. Thank you, Charlotte.